Chapter five homework review. First question is. Graymont Industry purchased Solvate, a chemical compound used in several of its products from Chem Master. Chem Master has just increased the list price of Solvate to six dollars and fifty cents per gallon. However, because Graymont purchases a high volume of Solvate, Chem Master grants the company a ten percent discount off the list price. Charges for shipping Solvate from Chem Master to Graymont's factory are one hundred dollars for a shipment of twenty-five fifty gallon drums. Special storage requirements cost fifty-five cents per gallon. What is the standard price per gallon? So standard pressure gallon in this case. Is done through a table. You can get list price. The shipping. For shipping, we need to get the volume discount. Then we get shipping. And then storage. And if we take all of this, we will get the standard price per gallon. And to get these numbers. We need to do the list price, which is given to us in the question. It's six dollars and fifty cents. As for the volume discount, it says that it is ten percent discount off the list price. We know that's six point five times zero point one. Gives us zero point six five. That's our price discount. And then the shipping costs are derived from the one hundred dollars. Divided by the gallons times the number of drums. In this case, we have fifty gallons. Multiplied by the number of drums. And in this case, we have twenty-five drums. This in turn will give us zero point zero eight. And then finally, for storage, it will be. Zero point fifty-five. This is a given. In a sense. If we decide to subtract the discount price. So this will be a minus. This will be a plus, and this will be a plus. You plug this into your calculator and you'll get six dollars. And forty-eight cents. That's the first question done. That is the standard price per gallon. Moving on to question two. We have, let me pull it up for you. Interpretive Dimensions provides sign language interpreters for major business conferences. Interpreters are paid an hourly rate of twenty dollars. Fringe benefits are estimated to be. Thirty percent of wages and employment taxes amount to ten percent of wages. We need to calculate the standard hourly rate for an interpreter. In this case, this is another pretty simple one. And hopefully, this makes a lot of sense. In a sense, we have the item. And we have the rate. We know that it's based hourly rate benefits. Employment taxes. And then standard rate per hour. So let's get them. We have the based hourly rate, which is already given in the problem, is twenty dollars. Then we have the benefits. We know that the benefits are twenty dollars times, and it's estimated to be thirty percent of wages. So in this case, we do twenty multiplied by thirty percent or zero point three. And this will give us six. As for the employment tax, employment taxes are about ten percent of the wages, so twenty times zero point one. And this will give us two. If we add all of this together. This will give us twenty-eight dollars. And zero cents. And this is the standard rate per hour. Moving on to the next question, I also hope that this also makes sense because these are gonna take quite a bit of time. The next question states that Mathis Music Stands, manufacturer. Decorative wooden music stands for discriminating musicians. I don't really know what discriminating musician is, but I don't think it is required to understand what that is in order to solve the problem. Each completed music stand contains two point five board feet of American cherry wood. In the process of matching the wood grain and cutting decorative scrollwork, one point five board feet of wood are scraped. Are scrapped, my bad. Calculate the standard quantity of American cherry in Mathis Music Sound. So to do this. And this is honestly gonna be pretty easy as well. We're gonna need to make another table. In this case, we have the item. And the quantity. Lift it. I don't know. Good. And here we have the completed unit. The scrap allowance. And the standard quantity per stand. We know that the completed unit is two point five board feet. That's given in the question. And the scrap allowance is one point five board feet. That's also given in the question, I believe. Yeah, uh, cutting decorative scrollwork, one point five board feet of wood are scrapped. And each music stand contains two point five board feet. So the amount of quantity per stand is an addition problem. Two point five plus one point five is equal to four board feet. Easy? Good. This next question is a bit of a difficult one, but we will be able to do so. Let's begin. First, I need to erase all this. No, we don't. In the next question, we have the following information given. It is that Hammerston and Company, oh, let me show you the problem. I almost forgot to show it. Control copy. Hammerstrom and Company makes and sells high-quality glare filters for computer monitors. John Stanford Controller is responsible for preparing Hamstrom's master budget. He has received the following sales forecast for the coming year from the sales manager. January, February, March, April, forecasted sales per unit fifteen K, twelve, twelve point five K, fourteen K, and eighteen K. Sales price per unit are eighty, 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 and seventy-five for April for some reason. Good. So to solve this one, we're gonna need to make a table. In this case, the table that we need is the budgeted units sold. Or BUS. The budgeted sales price or BSP. And the budgeted revenue, BR. And for this case, we need the sales budget for the first quarter. Quarters are taking place in years. There are twelve months in one year. If you divide it by four, which is a one quarter, you get three. So we need to calculate it for the first three months of the year. Which mean we need to use January. February. And March. But also, for the sake of consistency, we'll also do the quarter. Okay? Good. Let's fix that. The quarter. Good. We know that the forecasted sales unit for January is fifteen thousand. So in the budgeted units sold, it'll be fifteen K. For February, it is twelve point five K. For March, it is gonna be fourteen K. And then the quarter will be the sum. Of these, which is forty-one point five K. And then finally, the budgeted sales price is, believe it or not, fixed. It is eighty dollars every time. Okay? That's for all three. The other did three. And now, to get the budgeted revenue, we are gonna take the budgeted sales price and multiply it by the budgeted units sold. Because if I sell an apple for two dollars, and then I sell two apples, I'll make four dollars. Two times two is four, if so, three, it's two times three, which is six. That's why we multiply. Fifteen K times eighty is. One million. Two hundred thousand dollars. Yes. For February, it's gonna be one million dollars. You know what? Let's use a better metric here. It'll be one point two million. That sounds cooler. One point two million. The next one is gonna be one million. Because it's twelve point five times eighty. The next one is gonna be fourteen K times eighty, which is one point one two million. And then finally, it's gonna be forty-one point five K. In four point one five K. I am so sorry, ladies and gentlemen. No, no, forty-one point five. Yeah, yeah, that's correct, that's correct. Alright. This is the sign that's correct. So forty-one point five K times eighty will give me three point three two million. And that will be your sales budget for the first quarter. Does that make sense so far? Good. I really hope it does, because if it doesn't make sense, uh, please let me know in the comments, or just message me privately. The majority of you who are watching this video know how to contact me. Let us continue. What's the next question? The next question is Rosano Incorporated. Okay? So let's pull it up. Rosano Incorporated. Control copy. Control paste. Makes and sells drum sets. Nick Ross Controller is responsible for preparing the master budget. The sales manager has given Nick the following sales forecast for the coming months. April, May, June, July, and the forecasted sale units are twelve K, fifteen K, ten K, and eleven K. Rosano expects to have six K drum sets in ending inventory on March thirty-first. The company's policy is to carry thirty percent of the following month's projected sales into infant, into the ending inventory. Prepare Rosano's production budget for the second quarter. Okay? That should be relatively easy enough. So we know that the forecasted sales units, forecasted unit sales, or FUS. The fuss of it all for April. May. June. And July. Uh, okay? Are twelve K. Uh, this is just to let you guys know. Fifteen K. Eleven, ten K, which is easy enough to remember. And eleven K. So we need to prepare the production budget for the second quarter. In this instance, we're gonna need to make a table. This table is, should be relatively easy to make. So first we start with each month. So let's just separate it with a line. It'll be April. May. June. And then the final section will be the quarter. You guys thought it was July? No, it's quarter because it's this quarter, the second quarter, which is April, May, June. Months four, five, and six. And as for what we're looking for, we need the budgeted unit sales. We need the budgeted ending inventory. Let me fix the E and I, because those look really bad. The E specifically, because it looks like a Japanese five. Budgeted ending inventory. The total units required. The beginning inventory. And the budgeted production. For April, we know that the budgeted unit sales is twelve K, because that is given in the problem. So because of that, we can just get the other ones. May is fifteen K, because that's already given. And for June, it is ten K. Once more, because it is given. For the entire quarter, we just need to sum these up in order to get these correct, so it'll be thirty-seven K. Because twelve time, twelve plus fifteen plus ten is thirty-seven. Okay, let's fix this K. Good. Up next, I need to get the budgeted ending inventory. And the budget and the inventory, the company possibly carried thirty percent of the following magic sales into the ending inventory. So thirty percent of the following month. Let's get a calculator out. Fifteen. Equals one five zero 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 times zero point three, forty-five. And that is the method that I'll, that I'll be using to get the other ones. So the budgeted ending inventory. It's gonna be four point five K. We know that thirty percent of this is going to be three K. And that thirty percent of this is going to give me three. Point three K. Good. For the quarter, we're gonna use the last month, so June. My bad. For the quarter, we're just gonna use the last month, which is June's three point three K. Up next, I need to put the total units required. And in this case, has six dozen drum set, company's possibly carry thirty percent of the month's projected inventory. So to get the total units required, I need to find how many I need to meet the demand. Which in this instance is gonna be sixteen point five K. Here, it's going to be eighteen K. Uh, the, the way I get these numbers is by adding these two together. Add these together, you get this number here. So here, I'll give you a quick second. Do you think you can figure it out what it is? Good, it is. Thir- it's thirteen point three K. And if that's so simple enough, then it should be solvable for the quarterly, it's going to be. Right, you add these together and you get forty. Point. Three K. Good. Good. Forty point three K. And now we need to subtract from the beginning inventory. We know that the beginning inventory for the first one is the ending inventory of the previous quarter. So the ending inventory of the month. Of March, for March thirty-first, is six thousand, which is given in the problem. Therefore, our beginning inventory is actually going to be minus six K. What that means is, to get the other ones, you just take the budgeted ending inventory and put it down here. So here it's gonna be minus four point five K. Minus. Three K. And then for this one, it's going to be six thousand. For the quarter, it's gonna be minus six thousand. Reason being is that that's where it started. Minus six K. What we take here is we now take the sum of this, or in this case, we subtract it because we have a bunch of minus signs everywhere. And we'll get ten point five K. For this one, we'll get thirteen point five K for May. This is our budgeted production. And then for June, we'll get thirteen point three K minus three K, and we'll get ten point three K. And then finally, for the quarter, we're gonna take forty point three and subtract six. Which will give us thirty-four point three K. And that is how you make the production budget for the second quarter. Uh, give a quick second to copy it down on a piece of paper or something. Because it's always good to write down what you're doing. That way you can focus on it. The next question. Involves high flyers. Interesting. High flyers manufacturer. High flyer manufacturer competitions stunt kites. Yeah, manufacturers competition stunt gates. In November, Jerry Box prepared the following production budget for the first quarter of the coming year. The desired inventory is based on the following month's budgeted sales. For January, the budgeted sales units are twenty K. For February, it is thirty-five K. For March, it is thirty K. And for the quarter, it is eighty-five K. For the budgeted ending inventory, we have seven K, six K, twenty-four K, and twenty-four K. That goes in the same order. For the total units required, we have twenty-seven K, forty-one K, thirty-two point four K, and eighty-seven point four K. The beginning inventory for January quarter is gonna be four K, seven K, six K, four K. And then finally, the budgeted production for all of them is going to be twenty-three K, thirty-four K, twenty-six point four K, and eighty-three point four K. Now that we know that, we need to find what, we now know that the following higher than expected sales in December. Jerry conducted an inventory count on January second and discovered that the company had only two thousand completed kites on hand. He decided that given the brisk sales in December, the company should increase its desired ending inventory level from twenty to twenty-five percent of the next month's sales volume. So in this case, I need to prepare a new production budget for the first quarter. Okay? That should be simple enough. So in this case, the. The values that I'm going to need are for January. February. March, because that's the first quarter. And then quarterly, which is all three. As for what I'm going to need, I'm going to need the budgeted sales units. Budgeted unit sales, my bad. The budgeted ending inventory. I'm going to need the total units required. The beginning inventory. And the budgeted production. With that being said, let's begin. Starting with what's already given in the problem. We know. That it goes like this. January will be, for budgeted unit sales, will be twenty K. For February, it's also given, so it'll be thirty-five K. For March, it's going to be thirty thousand. And for the quarter, it should be the sum. Which is going to be eighty-five thousand. Once more, I recommend getting a piece of paper out or something to write with, because it's easier to follow along that way. For the budgeted ending inventory, the company should increase its desired ending inventory from twenty to twenty-five percent of the next month's sales volume. So the unit sales will be this. So let's go on the calculator. Which will be thirty five, oops, equals thirty-five thousand multiplied by. And it'll be zero point two five. Will give me eight seven five zero. We'll follow that track for all of them. So the budgeted ending inventory in this case will be. Eight. Point seven five K. For February, it's going to be the same thing. We'll take this number and multiply it by zero point two five. And in this case, we'll get seven point five K. Or seven thousand five hundred. For March, we'll look at the quarter. And we realize that it's going to be three thousand. Yes, three thousand. That's in this period here, because it's not a decimal. And the way we get the March one, if I recall correctly, is. Come, is because of the fact that. They only had two K on hand, but they had to add the amount. Yes. That's correct. Okay, good. And then for the quarter, we know how this ends. We have to. For this case. Solve for the quarter, which is gonna be three K, because it's the last one. As for total unit revenue, units required, uh, total units required, it's going to be the sum of these two, which will give us. Two eight point seven five thousand. For this two, it's going to be forty-two point five K. For these two, well, it's going to be a pretty easy addition. Thirty thousand plus three thousand is thirty-three thousand. And then eighty-five thousand plus three thousand will give us eighty-eight thousand. Simple enough. And then up next, we need the ending inventory. The, the beginning inventory, and the beginning inventory will be calculated through. How it does it in the book. At, on January second, they discovered that they only had two thousand completed kites, so that'll be good for that one. The minus two thousand. Because that's given in the problem. As for where these numbers come from, we know that the beginning inventory of the next month is the beginning ending inventory of the previous month. So in this case, it's going to be minus. Eighty. Eight point seven five K. In this case, it'll be thirty-three K minus seven point five K. And in this final case, it'll be eighty-eight K minus, which is gonna be our ending inventory, three thousand. My bad. Seven point five K, because this is quarterly, not the next month. Because this is quarterly, we take the previous one, and that's seven point five K, because it's the beginning of the end. And then finally, for. Oh, no, my bad, my bad. It's the ending inventory at the beginning, so it's not at the end, it's at the beginning, which will mean that the ending inventory here will be two thousand. So the beginning inventories from January, February, March, and the quarter are two thousand, eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, seven thousand five hundred, and two thousand. And then finally, for the budgeted production. We're gonna get these, sum of these, or in this case, we subtract them from each other. And we'll get twenty-six. Point seven five. It's a horrible five, looks like K. Point seven five thousand. We get here will be thirty-three thousand. Seven hundred and fifty. For this one, we're going to get twenty-two thousand. Five hundred. And then for the quarterly, we're going to get eighty-six thousand. Good. And that is how you make the production budget for the first quarter for high flyers. Erase all the ink. Good. The next problem involves writer auto. Alright. Writer Auto has developed the following production plan for its new auto part. From January, February, March, April, the budgeted production units are twelve thousand, eight thousand, thirteen thousand, and fifteen thousand. Each unit contains four pounds of raw material. The desired raw material ending inventory is forty percent of the next month's production needs, plus an additional one hundred pounds. January's beginning inventory requirements equal forty percent of the current month's production needs, and plus the additional one hundred pounds. Good. And then we need to prepare the direct material purchase budget for the first three months of the coming year. Simple enough. Should be. Let's do it. Let's go with a nice blue this time. So in this case, we need the a lot of, a lot of it, so we actually don't even want this red line here. We're gonna have January, February, March, the quarter, and April. Good. For this, we are going to need the budgeted production multiplied by the standard pound per unit, which is equal to the production needs. And then we add the budgeted ending inventory, which will be equaled to the total direct material required. That is not a good D. Total direct material required in pounds. And then we subtract the beginning inventory to obtain the budgeted purchases in pounds. Beginning with January, we'll take from what is already given to us and just assign twelve thousand. For February, it's going to be eight thousand. For the month of March, it is thirteen thousand. For the quarter, it is the sum of those, giving us thirty three thousand. And then because April is its own little part of it, and it's not a part of the first quarter, we know that it is fifteen thousand, because it is given to us. To make things easier on us, we'll solve for April first. In a sense, we multiply all of these by four. And that is constant, because it is given to us in the problem. Times four, times four, times four, times four, because each unit contains four pounds of raw material. Okay? Because they all contain four pounds of raw material, we can just do times four. And then April ends here, and it'll give us sixty thousand. Now that we have April, we can just need to focus on the left side of the table, January to the quarter. So let's get all these multiplications out of the way. It'll have forty eight thousand for January, as the production needs. For February, the production needs will be eight thousand times four, which will be thirty two thousand. For March, we'll have thirteen thousand times four, will give us our production needs, which is fifty two thousand. And then for the quarter, the budgeted production is thirty three thousand, multiplied by four, gives us one hundred and thirty two thousand. That's correct. Then we need to add the budgeted ending inventory. The budgeted ending inventory is equal to forty percent of the following month's production needs, plus an additional hundred pounds. So for January, let's do the calculations. For January, it'll be thirty two pounds, because that's what's given to us in the question, because it comes from the next month's production needs. Times zero point four. We'll put this in a parentheses for now, because zero point four is forty percent. And then we will add one hundred pounds. That gives us twelve thousand nine hundred, and we'll be repeating this pattern for the other questions. So fifty two, so if we plug fifty two thousand into this, you'll get twenty nine zero zero, and we'll keep doing that ladder rinse repeat for the next three. So for the budgeted ending inventory, we already know that this is twelve thousand nine hundred. For this one, we know that it is twenty thousand nine hundred. For this one, however, we just need to take from April really quickly, six K, plugged into this, and we will get twenty four thousand one hundred. As for what we're doing for the quarter, well, because we know that it follows the next month of April, we just have to plug in the same thing here, which is twenty four thousand one hundred. Good. For then, we need to put the total direct material required in pounds. So the total direct material required in pounds is already given to us in the question, I believe. Let me check. Yes, it is. It is given to us in the question at when is that? Wait, we just add these together. What am I doing? These are given to us by adding them together. Forty eight thousand plus twelve point nine thousand will give us sixty point nine sixty thousand nine hundred. For this one, when we add these together, we'll get fifty two thousand nine hundred. For this one, when we add them together, we'll get seventy six thousand one hundred. And then for this one, we will also add them together, and we will get a hundred and fifty six thousand one hundred. Yeah, because this is a simple addition problem. Shouldn't be too hard to figure out how we get these. Good. Then we subtract the beginning inventory. For January's beginning inventory specifically, we, it's forty percent. So it'll be forty percent of production needs plus a hundred pounds. So in turn, it looks a little bit like this. Zero point four multiplied by the production needs, and production needs is forty eight thousand in this circumstance. Then we add a hundred pounds, because that is what's given to us in the question. One nine three zero zero is our beginning inventory for January. Other than that, the other beginning inventories are already in the question for us. Okay? So one nine so nineteen thousand three hundred for the beginning inventory of January. For February, it's already given to us. Beginning ending inventory is the beginning inventory of the next month. So twelve thousand nine hundred goes here, and these are always subtracted. For March, it's going to be twenty thousand nine hundred. I'm really glad they're giving us simple numbers, by the way. Otherwise, this would take a while. And for this, we have nineteen thirty? Wait a minute. Where did I get that number from? Oh, because it is beginning inventory, it calculates for the January, which is one nine three zero zero. So we just put in the same thing here. Good. And then once we subtract this from this, so we subtract the beginning inventory from the total direct material required in pounds, and we'll get forty one thousand six hundred pounds for the budgeted purchases. For February, it's going to be forty thousand. For March, it's going to be fifty five point two thousand. And then for the quarter, it's going to be hundred and thirty six thousand eight hundred. And that is how the direct material purchase budget for the first three months of the coming year is prepared. Pretty long one. And I don't think he's gonna ask this one on the test, because it'll take too long, but it's good to know this, because once we know this, the rest of it makes more sense. Up next, we have to read about Sanchez Sleep Corporation. Oh, that's actually sleep systems. Sanchez Sleep Systems manufactures nylon mesh hammocks for a chain of retail outlets located throughout the southeast. The company plans to manufacture and sell thirty thousand hammocks during the fourth quarter. Overhead costs are expected to include variable indirect materials, variable indirect labor, other variable overhead, salaries, insurance, and depreciation. From top to bottom, that is four dollars and twenty five cents per hammock, eleven dollars and fifty cents per hammock, three dollars and twenty five cents per hammock, sixty thousand dollars per quarter, five thousand dollars per quarter, and twenty six thousand dollars per quarter. With this, I must prepare the manufacturing overhead budget for the fourth quarter. This one is also quite long, so let us begin. First, we need to set the entire table together. So this is the fourth quarter. Q T R. And then here, we're gonna need the budgeted production. That looks terrible. Let's fix that. Uh, erase all ink. Let's get a nice red here, so that we can see it clearly. Let's begin. So we know that the fourth quarter Q T R will require the following numbers. So we know that the budgeted production is thirty thousand, given to us by the question, as the company plans to manufacture and sell thirty thousand hammocks. Up next, we need the indirect materials. The indirect materials are calculated like this. We'll take the price per hammock, which was four dollars and twenty five cents, as given in the problem. And we multiply it by the amount of hammocks we want to sell, which in this case is thirty thousand. Oh, by the way, before we put this section here, it should be noted that this is where the variable overhead goes. Okay, it's underneath this. And for the indirect materials will be this. So when you multiply these together, you should get a hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred. So one two seven point five K. Good. Following up this section of the question, we need to get the indirect labor. And we know that the indirect labor is going to be the eleven, is the variable indirect labor, which is eleven dollars and fifty cents, multiplied by the amount of hammocks we need to sell, which is thirty thousand. And when you multiply them together, you get thirty, three hundred and forty five thousand dollars. To show that numerically, it looks like this. That's, this number gives us this. Simple, right? Simple math. Then for the other, we get that through the three dollar, the other variable overhead is three dollars and twenty five cents, multiplied by the number of hammocks. So three point two five, multiplied by thirty thousand. And that will give us ninety seven thousand five hundred. Okay? That should make sense. Now that we've done these calculations, the rest of it realistically should not be too hard. As the rest of it is given to us in the problem. We know that the salaries are equal to sixty thousand. We know that the insurance is equal to five thousand. Does that make sense where I'm getting that from? I think so. Let me explain where I got the insurance from. The insurance was obtained because it says insurance is five thousand per quarter in the question. The depreciation is equal to twenty six thousand. The total fixed overhead is the sum of all of this, which should give us well, the total fixed overhead is the sum of these, from here to oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. For anyone curious, the total variable overhead cost is the sum of these, which is this. Fifty five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is the total variable overhead cost. So when we get the other one, the total fixed overhead, it's going to be the salary plus the insurance plus the depreciation, which is ninety one thousand dollars. For the total manufacturing overhead, we just take the sum of these two, so five hundred and seventy thousand plus ninety one thousand. We add them together, and we get sixty six 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 one thousand, so six hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. So now we need to get the less non-cash items. Less non-cash items. And that would require getting depreciation, which in this case is twenty six thousand, as already given in the problem. And the total cash costs will just be to add these two together. Total cash costs is equal to six hundred and thirty five thousand. And that is how you prepare the manufacturing overhead budget for the fourth quarter. So a lot of steps for these problems. Up next, the incoming year. Let me put that question up here. In the coming year, Burise Incorporated will be introducing its first product, a wrist brace that protects serious video gamers, what, from repetitive motion injuries? Oh, carpal tunnel. The brace will be sold for eleven dollars and twenty five cents to retailers throughout the country. All sales will be made on an account, and expected sixty five percent of sales will be collected within the quarter of the sales. Another thirty percent in the quarter following the sale. The remaining five percent of credit sales are expected to be uncollectible. The sales budget for the coming year is as follows. For the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and fourth quarter in order, the budgeted sales units are twenty five thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, and eighty thousand. I need to prepare Burise or Erases Incorporated's cash receipts budget for the coming year. Alright. Ooh, this one's gonna be long. Very long indeed. But that's what's fun about it. Okay? Let's use a nice red this time. So we have the first quarter, the second quarter, the third quarter, and the fourth quarter. And then finally, annual. So to get the, these numbers, I need to take the budgeted units sold, the budgeted sales price, and the budgeted sales revenue. Good. Is chapter five really this long? Yes, we're only halfway through, by the way. So this is twenty five thousand as given in the problem. For, and they're all given in the problem, by the way. So for the second quarter, it's going to be forty thousand. For the third quarter, it's gonna be fifty thousand. For the fourth quarter, it's going to be eighty thousand. And then annually, we'll take the sum of these and get hundred and ninety-five thousand. Good. And now we need the budgeted sales price. Thankfully, this is given to us, and we know that it's eleven dollars and fi- and twenty-five cents. And that's the same for all of them. Good. So then the budgeted sales revenue is going to be these numbers multiplied by each other. Let me check. So just for the sake of letting you guys know, it's twenty, twenty-five thousand, multiplied by eleven point two five, two eight one two five zero, that's correct. So if we multiply these numbers together, we'll get the following numbers down here. It'll be two hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. Then we'll get four hundred and fifty thousand. Afterwards, it's going to be five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And then for the fourth quarter, it's going to be eighty times eleven point two five, which will give us nine hundred thousand dollars, because all these are in dollars, by the way. And then annually, we'll take the sum of this and multiply it by eleven point two five, and we should get two million hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty million, okay? These types of numbers make Dr. Evil quiver in his boots. I don't even think he wore boots. Okay, okay. So now that we know all of this, we can continue on to making the cash budget receipts, because this was just the sales budget. Now we need to make the cash budget receipt. And this is going to be a really long section. Like I said, I recommend having a pen and paper, so you'll still be able to see this. I won't. But the good news is I can remember it. That's why you need to write things down. So the cash budget receipt for the first quarter, the second quarter, the third quarter, the fourth quarter, and the totals begins. So we need also the first, second, third, and the fourth. And of course, we need the bad debts. Now that we have our little script here, let us begin by plugging things in. For the first quarter, we only have first quarter sales. Okay? And we know what those sales are because they're given to us in the previous section. An expected sixty-five percent of the sales will be collected with quarter on the sale, another thirty percent in the quarter following the sale, the remaining five percent of the credit sales are expected to be uncontrollable. So, in that instance, so another percent in the quarter following the sale, we can begin. So let's go to this cell given, and take twenty-eight one two five zero, because that's for the first quarter, multiplied by zero point six five, oops. I need to put it in. And that gives us this number here. Hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Which in turn means that we can't use the time-saving feature. I just gotta write the whole thing down. Okay, remember, all of these are in dollars. Hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve point five. For the second quarter, and, and then of course, the total here, because the first quarter only counts the first quarter and doesn't tear up the other quarters, we know that the total is also hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Good. Up next, we need to get the subsequent value for the second quarter. And the second quarter, let's calculate it. We know that the question says thirty percent in the following quarter sales, six percent of the sales will be collected within the quarter of the sale, and the remaining five percent will be uncontrollable. The uncontrollable should be the bad quarter. That make sense? Good. Good. Because this is where the first quarter sales are. For the second quarter, we all know that it is going to be four hundred and fifty thousand, which is what we get in the second quarter budgeted sales revenue, multiplied by zero point six five. And when we take those numbers together, we get two hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred. And then for the second section, because we gotta go to the second quarter, oh, my, that's, this is for the second quarter, so let's, let's rewrite that down here. Two, nine, two point five, okay? And then because the previous quarter will be thirty percent, we know that it's going to be up here, will be forty, four hundred and fifty thousand times point three for this section, will give us a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, okay? And then we'll add these two together. And that should give us three, seven, six, eight, seven, five. So three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. Good. Up next, we need to get for the third quarter. For the third quarter, if you remember, we got the budgeted sales revenue was equal to five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred. So for the third quarter, we need to multiply that by zero point six five, because that is sixty-five percent. And with those together, we'll get that these are three, six, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Which up here, we'll do it by zero point three, because that's thirty percent. And that multiplication gives us a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty. Okay? We'll add these two together. And that should give us five hundred thousand six hundred and twenty-five. That looks like about two. There we go. Hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. That's the total for the third quarter. For the fourth quarter, we calculated that it is nine hundred thousand for the budgeted sales revenue. And as such, we got to follow the same rules again. The fourth quarter sales will be equal to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And then for the third quarter, regarding the fourth quarter, it's going to be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we'll get this by doing nine hundred thousand multiplied by zero point three. And this is nine hundred thousand multiplied by zero point six five. Remember, once you realize that that's the pattern, then everything makes more sense. Because I know that just looking at it, it's a bit chaotic. So we'll take the sum of these and we'll get that it is equal to seven hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is the total for the fourth quarter. But now we need the bad debts. So the bad debts require us to take this number, the original number that we used, so for the first quarter, it will be two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. And then we need to multiply it by zero point zero five, because zero point zero five will be uncollectible. As I said, five percent will not, will be bad debts. Therefore, to get the bad debts, we'll do the two we need to get two hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty, times zero point five, which if you plug into your calculator is fourteen thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Then for the second quarter, it's going to be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, multiplied by zero point zero five, which is twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And then for the third quarter, it's going to be five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, multiplied by zero point zero five, which will give us twenty-eight one two five. And then for the fourth quarter, it's gonna be nine hundred thousand, multiplied by zero point zero five. And that'll give us forty-five thousand dollars. We take a sum of these, and we know that our bad debt is going to be a hundred and nine thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And that is how you calculate the cash receipts budget. But we're not done with the question. I still need to determine the net accounts receivable. Recommend you pause the video and write down the cash receipts budget if you haven't finished. Because that will make things easier to solve. We still need the net accounts receivable. To get the net accounts receivable, from what I could tell, we need to just go to the end of the year. Hmm, assume that no accounts were written off during the year. Question, the first quarter, none included accounts receivable from a prior period because the company is just beginning operations. Determine the net accounts receivable at the end of the year, assume that no accounts have been written off during the year. How do you get that? The brace will be sold for eleven dollars and two ninety-five cents for retailers throughout the country, all sales will be made on an account, and expected sixty-five percent of the sales will be collected within the quarter of the sale, another thirty percent in the following sale. Twenty-five percent are expected to be uncontrollable, sales budget for the following year as follows, cash receipts budget for the coming year. And then I had to make, so first I had to make the sales budget and the cash receipts budget. And then I needed to determine the net account receivables at the end of the year, and I need to assume that no accounts have been written off during the year? Hold on. Give me a quick second, I just need to check something. How to determine net accounts receivable? Interesting. Okay, so let me just get the formula really quickly, so that we can do it quickly. Otherwise, this will be really annoying. The net accounts receivable. Oh, right, the quarter for the next year. I remember that. Yes, I remember that. So to get the net accounts receivable, I need to take quarter four, ninety thousand, and then I need to multiply it by the amount in the quarter, which will be three, because there's three months and each quarter. No, 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 no. It's, uh, the quarter one for next year. Uh, so prior to the note, sale in quarter four realizes sixty-five percent in same quarter and thirty percent in quarter one the next year. So let's prepare the cash budget for your say, sales collected in the next thirty percent of the quarter. Hmm. In the next quarter will be thirty percent of the sales collected in the same quarter. Ninety thousand, okay? Okay, okay, okay. So to get the sales price, based on what I figured out, you, let's just make this quick thing really quickly. So we know that quarter four is nine hundred thousand. Okay? And we know that sixty-five percent of this is equal to five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And we know that thirty percent is equal to a hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. This is a thirty percent. But is that thirty percent the total cash receipts? Hold on. Okay, you know what? I'm just gonna show you guys the steps here. So what we need is the cash receipts budget again. I figured it out. Cash receipts budget. So for this, we need the particulars. And then we need the Q one, Q two, quarter three, quarter four, and quarter one of next year. Okay, quarter one of next year. So we need the total credit sales to retailers, which were the totals that we obtained in the previous question. Not the little one, but the big one, so it'll be the eighteen two eight one two point five. For quarter two, it was three, seven, six, eight, seven, five. For quarter three, it was five hundred thousand, six, two, five. For quarter four, it was six two, five. For quarter four, it was seven, five, three, seven, five, zero. So I'm just gonna write the big line to separate them. And this is a five, not the dollar sign. And now that we have all of these together, oops. So it's, uh, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and, and then the third quarter will be five hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and then the fourth quarter is seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we need the sale collected in the same quarter. The sale collected in the same quarter is this. Oh my gosh, I I think I missed that. Did I? No, 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 no. So since the sale collected in the same quarter, sales collected in same quarter is equal to zero point six five. We know that for the quarter one, it's going to be a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve point five. Two thousand, eight, one, two point five, okay? So that goes effectively for all of these, okay? And that's what these numbers here are. And we get these numbers from the original multiplication problem of two, eight, one, two, five, zero. Which means that the total, this is actually the sales for the next same quarter. The original number is not this one, okay? This is the total, this is not the total credit sales. That has to do with this being the sales collected. Sales collected in quarter. The original numbers were two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred, and nine hundred thousand. As for the sale collected in the next quarter, which is thirty percent of the same Of the same one, hundred, which mean that we don't actually calculate the one for this quarter, we calculate the one for the next quarter. We'll get the numbers of. Eighty-four-thousand-three-seven-five. And then the next one will be. Hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, the next one is a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty. We'll take the sum of those, which is the total cash receipts. So in this case, let's look at quarter two, for example. We'll take the thirty percent from quarter one, which is eighty-four-thousand-three-seven-five. And add that to this number here. And that'll give us three-seven-six-eight-seven-five. And then we continue this pro- we continue this set for the other quarters. So we also have the one-eight, oh shit. Okay, that means class is starting soon, I gotta finish that. One-eight-two-eight-one-two-point-five. And then what we'll do is we'll take this pattern and do it for the rest of them. So for this one, we'll add. One-three-five-zero-zero-zero, and that'll give us five-hundred-thousand. Sixty-five? Yeah. Because this number isn't the, this is the number we have at the start, but once we do all the calculations, this number becomes, because when you multiply by zero-point-six-five. You'll get three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. So we'll add this number here and you'll get five-hundred-and-sixty. Five-six-two-five, and then we'll add this one here, which will be the addition of a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand. Seven-hundred-and-fifty. Okay, this is the, this is the table that we already made, just a quick run-through of it. However, to get the one for quarter one of next year, we realized the pattern. And that pattern is that it'll always be thirty percent of the quarter sales. So in this case, to get quarter one sales for next year, which is what we're looking for, the net accounts receivable. The net accounts receivable. To get this number, all we have to do is take the. The annual number. Which in this case will be ninety thousand for quarter four, because that is what we have for the budgeted sales revenue. So, year four. Budgeted sales revenue. Is equal to nine-hundred-thousand. And then we multiply that by thirty percent. And that'll give us two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, and that is our net accounts receivable. That's going to be the end of part one for the chapter five homework. I'll return to it after my class.